...a full voting member. Next is Mark Finneran, who is also a full voting member. My name is James Morris. I'm currently the Chair of the Zoning Board. Next is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full voting member and serving as the Board's Clerk. And finally, we have Scott Peterson, who is the Vice Chairman. We're also joined this evening by Norrie Stockman, the Zoning Administrator, and Ashley DeMello, our Recording Secretary. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as all zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public to allow for a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the Clerk will read the public announcement from the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's attorney will have, or representative, excuse me, will have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the Board. The Board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory comments. They can include an opinion in favor or opposition to a project or to ask a specific question about a project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The Chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should please wait to be recognized by the Chair. Come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. The microphones do not amplify your voice, but they're there for the benefit of the viewers of FCTV. The Board may continue the hearing to a future date or time. Otherwise, when the Board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will then be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The Board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 17. First up on this evening's agenda is public comment. This particular public comment is for anything that is not currently on the agenda this evening. Does any member of the public wish to make a public comment about anything not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Next up, we have continuations. First up on our continuation list is Hearing 105-22. Bowen, Trustee of 102 Grand Ave., Falmouth, requesting a modification of an existing permit of 110-15 and 3721, requesting to remove Condition 2 of Special Permit 110-15 and increase the total lot coverage of the property. Good evening, Mr. Clawer.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Earlier today, I submitted an email to the Zoning Administrator requesting continuation until February 8th. I'm February, June 8th. That'd be a long continuation. June 8th. I wasn't able to get the plan submitted, the revised plan submitted, in a timely manner, and I didn't want to submit it today, knowing that the Board wouldn't be able to do so. So, I have the revised plan in hand. I'd be submitting it tomorrow, so we'd like to continue until June 8th, if possible.
So, I think the June 8th meeting is going to be problematic. I think at this point, we're looking to continue to 6:29 if that date is available. Okay for you?
Yep.
Is that correct information? Requested continue to 6:29. Is there a motion to do so?
Something moved.
Give that to you. Is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Scott. The discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is a vote. We'll see you back on 6:29.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on our continuation list, we have 24-23. Bateman, Trustee of 14 Clam Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a pool and rent station exceeding 20 percent lot coverage by structures. And I believe we've had a revised...
Landscape plan.
Landscape plan that was submitted since the last meeting.
Well, this is an old one. Come on. I'm here representing Susan Bateman with Klandsey Construction. We did meet with the Butters over at 9 Croll on Monday, this past Monday, and we were able to come up with a plan that seemed to work for everyone. As you know, this was the original plan. We were just going to put up the fence. We weren't, you know, giving anything or doing anything. We had the plans revised, and this here now shows that we are going to offer, I think it's roughly 25 plants on their property, eight feet apart, which have been reserved over at Mahoney's, which we will then pay for and dig holes for, and they will plant and maintain on their property. We are also adding stone, three-quarter inch crushed stone along the fence line on their property as well to help with the drainage, so that way there's no water runoff into their yard. And these are what will be going up on their property. We'll be getting three-foot and four-foot arborvitaries going every eight feet. And the pool equipment shed will be an actual shed. So, not exactly like that, but similar. It'll be, I talked to BSS yesterday, yeah, yesterday, to put on the plans for a 12 by eight. We are aware of the setbacks and the updated plan needed to be submitted for completion. So, we'll have all the required setbacks. This'll have the insulation as requested for soundproofing, and the pool will still have the runoff at the pool base as well. Any questions?
Court of Questions, start with you, Jerry.
Who's installing, you're providing?
We are providing the plants.
And installing them on private property?
We are digging the hole for them as agreed, but they will be installing and maintaining.
Okay, that's on you and the Butters.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we are aware.
No other questions?
Frank?
I had three questions from the last meeting. You've already answered two of them. Would you just confirm that the lighting is down-facing lighting? It's not going to be lighting up the neighbors' backyard?
Yep. This is the exterior lighting on the house. So, there's soffit lights, so they focus just on the house. There is no, and then the deck lights, they all face down.
All right, thank you. Mark?
Everybody's happy?
Well, we'll see.
We'll see.
I have nothing.
Thank you for meeting with the neighbors. I appreciate it.
No worries.
You've worked out that you're going, you're able to go on their property?
Yes.
Okay. No, I think it looks good. Thank you.
Great job. Glad everybody chatted and hugged, so that's positive. I guess we'll hear from the Butters to confirm that, but thank you for doing that.
Okay.
I have no questions. Public comment?
I don't believe there's anything that I missed, so.
Henry Peters, Lot 1, Croll Road. And Lot 9, Croll Road. What we've, what we've worked out is I have this plan here sketched out.
Show it to the Clerk. Is that being submitted? I'm sorry.
You're going to submit this? May I take this out?
Sure.
Thank you. This is your presentation? Stamp this in.
And I have some pictures here that show the water issues that are there now. That's the standing water on his lot. And I have what we could, put a tree every eight feet, something like this. He's agreed to, he's agreed to supply 24 trees, 25 trees, enough stone. And he doesn't have to come on our property. He can walk his mini excavator right down his lot line, rough out a hole for us, spot, dump some stone, and we'll be happy. He said, "We would take care of the plantings. We would take care of the stone." That stone galley way that the perimeter of the property would alleviate any water problem when he finishes his grading and his plantings on his side. So, what I'd like to recommend is that we get these trees in within the next week or two before any work starts on this pool or any fence goes up or anything. And it'll be much easier to work right from his side with his machine. Supply adequate enough amount of stone, and we're good to go. Which I would estimate is around five or six yards of stone, crushed stone.
Any questions, Mr. Peters?
Just a point of clarification. Well, you understand, they're not going to be able to do anything for several days because the permission was voted today. Doesn't go into effect for, was it 28 days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days.
Well, they don't have to do anything. All they have to do is get our trees there. Want to get these trees established before July. July and August is a tough time to plant trees.
We can't necessarily mandate timelines. That's the only thing, sir.
Well, if we are agreement with him.
I'm sorry?
If we're in agreement with him.
Again, if there's a private agreement with your neighbor or the developer, that's one thing, but we can't mandate a, certainly action while the permit is still under appeal. We issue a decision, it's recorded with the Clerk, subject to a possible appeal for 30 days, so we can't mandate when someone is going to start construction. If they do something before the appeal period, they do so with their peril if somebody takes an appeal. So, we can't necessarily mandate timelines. I certainly understand if you want to convince the developer to move forward before then, that's between you and the developer, but...
So, you wouldn't see any problem with it if we're okay with it?
I'm not giving any type of legal advice one way or the other. I'm merely stating what the appeal period and what the law is and what could happen.
If we're in agreement with him, you wouldn't see a problem with it.
I'm not giving a decision one way or the other on the issue.
You can make any deal you want.
To make any agreement, it's not before the Zoning Board, and we have no power to do anything.
They seem to have agreed with you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure he can do anything on his own property during the 20...
We're not going to give legal advice about the property rights of anybody.
On my property?
We're not giving any legal advice about your property rights or anyone else's, sir.
Good point. Thank you.
Questions over here?
No, I think the outcome was a little bit drawn out, but I'm glad everybody got to the right point, so thank you for your diligence, and hopefully everything comes out okay.
I saw a hand go over their other public comments.
Motion to close.
All right. So, we have a little discussion or...
I guess not.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Discussion?
Do I have those pictures?
This will need to take into the record. We can make a copy if you want to back, but thank you.
Mail it to them or do it now or?
We'll mail it.
We can mail it to you.
I'll just put it in.
You want the page back?
A little picture of it. You could probably take a picture of it right now.
You've got your phones?
That's included as part of the record at this point.
Yeah, they can take a picture with his phone just to make, cover himself.
Any follow-up questions from the Board? No?
I think I'm all set.
Good project. Discussion? Jerry, anything?
No, I'm sorry, no.
I basically am satisfied. There was a couple of concerns that I had. I think they've been addressed. I mentioned the last time that I thought this was an approvable project, and I appreciate that the neighbors got together and worked out their difference, so that's fine.
Mark?
All good with me?
I'm fine with it.
Motion to close then?
Yeah, a motion to close.
Second.
Second, Miss Suzanne. The discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing is closed.
Motion to approve?
Second again.
Give that to you, second.
Findings? Findings? It's in an RSC zone. It's Overly District, Corn Pond. It's a 240, 11.3A, four parentheses. Lot size is 16, 563. Existing is 19.92. Staying 19.92. New is 22.55, and new with structures, paving and everything is 34.18. I think that's all I have on here.
Additional findings, maybe, down here? Anything else or findings? Norrie? Anything? You think?
According to the plan?
For findings, not conditions. Applicant wishes to put in a plunge pool and rent station. Conditions?
She's submitting a new plan to show the shed?
Yep.
Per revised plans, including landscaping, as well as gravel around, as delineated and requested. Excuse me, back to findings. Just note that the continuances, as well as the concerns of the Butters concerning drainage and vehicles coming across private property to access the lot. Just add those, please. Under conditions, though, per plans, revised plans, including landscape and gravel, standard hours of work.
Lighting should be downward.
Lighting should be downward facing, as well as on the porch.
Pool equipment exposure.
Pool equipment is to be enclosed.
With the sound equipment as the applicant?
Sound equipment inside, yep.
Suggestion?
Yep.
Who's going to maintain the French drain on the perimeter of the property? That stone, it could get clogged. I mean, would that be a condition that that French drain be maintained?
The drain in the landscaping should be maintained by the applicant.
On their property?
On their property.
Yes.
On their property, yes. Other conditions? Frank, anything? No. Mark?
No.
No additional structures?
No additional structures or lot coverage without modification of the special permit. Anything else, Norrie? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's a vote. Thank you, and thank you for working with the neighbors to address their concerns. Makes our decision-making process much easier.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, under new hearings, we have Application 34-23. The 300 Committee Land Trust Incorporated, 13 Thomas B. Landers Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit for permission to use the property as a philanthropic institution.
We have the 300 Committee Land Trust, Inc., 157 Locust Street, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-6.1B and 240-11.4A, 1 in parentheses, small i, and 240-14.11, 2 in parentheses, of the Code of Falmouth, for permission to use the property for a philanthropic...
Philanthropic.
Thank you. Institution on subject property known as 13 Thomas B. Landers Road. And we have...
I'll get into my disclosure in a minute.
Yeah. We have no comment from planning? Oh, we do. We have a whole planning board. They did a decision, so I think, I'm not going to read the whole thing. It's pretty long. We can incorporate it.
One.
They did that, sorry. I can do engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Thomas B. Landers Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of Butters or public rights-of-way. Number four, based on the nature and location of the proposed work, erosion and sediment control from the project should not be an issue. However, the contract will be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. The document can be found in the Engineering Division page. References to the Town Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the Zoning Board of Appeals, who will be the permitting authority. Number five, we previously reviewed this project under site plan review with the Planning Board, and attached our comments for that. Engineering Fire Department had no issues. Hong Kong, no issues. I think that's all we have.
Health issued a Title V inspection, passed.
Yep.
That it?
Yep.
And, Mr. Clawer, good evening. I did file a disclosure in this case. 300 Club, excuse me, Committee currently is located at 157 Locust Street. That is a building that is shared by both Town Council as well as my law office, so we have a common landlord. I don't believe it to be a conflict, but I did file disclosure in the interests of transparency. If you'd like me to recuse, if you'd like to speak further, I'm happy to do so.
I don't, I don't think that presents a conflict that we need to be concerned about, but I do appreciate you doing so.
Good evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Clawer. I'm an attorney here in town, and I have the pleasure of representing the 300 Committee Land Trust tonight. Before I go into my presentation here, I'd like to actually let Jessica Rittenhour, the Executive Director, speak for a moment about the 300 Committee. If you may.
Hi, I'm Jessica Rittenhour, Executive Director of the 300 Committee Land Trust, and I want to recognize our Board President, Anne Marie Ronfala, who's here this evening, and several Board members from the 300 Committee Land Trust. My plan is to share a few brief introductory comments on our mission, some of the work, highlights of 38 years, orientation to the site, 13 Thomas Landers Road, a few comments about the headquarters project, and then I'm going to turn it back over to Kevin. Tom Bunker is joining us here this evening as well. BSS Design has been working with us on this site since pre-acquisition, this site and many other projects. So, there's a place for me to plug this in, direct?
I'll be IT support.
Thank you. Attorney Clawer, IT support Clawer. Many hats. Okay. The 300 Committee Land Trust, this project, the 300 Committee at Millstone Farm, this project has been in the works for several years. We've been an organization in Falmouth preserving open space since 1985. Our current location is at 157 Locust Street. It's a rented space that we've been in for a couple of decades at least. Our mission is to permanently preserve and protect open space in Falmouth through education or through acquisition, education, and stewardship. In our 38-year history, the 300 Committee has collaborated with the Town of Falmouth to preserve more than 2,500 acres of open space for conservation, recreation, clean drinking water, farming, and climate change mitigation. I also want to clarify, partnering with the Town of Falmouth is one major partner. We partner with a number of nonprofit conservation organizations. We partner with the state and, in fact, with the federal government. Our goal is to preserve land in Falmouth, and working in partnerships is often the way that we're able to get that done. We do provide land stewardship services for more than 2,000 acres of town-owned land, and that has been the case since the early days of the 300 Committee in the 1980s. We also own 300 acres of land. That happens to be a coincidence right now. We are still protecting open space, so that number will increase. But certainly, we have stewardship responsibility for all of the land that is within our current land holdings. As I mentioned, we're poised to enter a new chapter in pursuit of the 300 Committee's open space mission. By establishing a permanent headquarters at Millstone Farm, we're seeking to deepen our roots in Falmouth and broaden our reach as a conservation resource. Every project that the 300 Committee takes on in terms of land protection is in perpetuity, and in fact, the signage on the property, shallow pond woodlands, 70 acres preserved forever. All of the properties have a permanent conservation status. So, the status of the 300 Committee in Falmouth, we are an organization that's here to stay. We intend to continue land protection, land stewardship, and outreach, and so the concept of a permanent home for the 300 Committee became a very important goal in our strategic plan several years ago, and we conducted a search to find the property that had the right fit for that permanent home. Brief remarks on the orientation of the site. Where are we seeking to establish this headquarters? I hope it's fitting to show this in context of Falmouth's open space. So, the map shown on the left illustrates existing open spaces, protected lands in the Town of Falmouth. The dark green is town-owned land. The brown is state. The lighter green is nonprofit, but the location of conservation land is really distributed throughout Falmouth, and that has long been a goal of our efforts. We are very excited about this location at 13 Thomas Landers Road, in part because of its proximity to the Coonamessett Greenway. Many of those properties are town-owned, and there are also some significant showcase parcels that the 300 Committee owns. Riverbend Conservation Area. We have Andrews Grove to the south. The centralized location of this property is extremely helpful from a stewardship perspective as that's a major part of our mission and a major purpose of having a headquarters. The building itself is shown here, known as the Zelinski House, but the signage is Millstone Farm, and I believe our intent is for it to be the 300 Committee at Millstone Farm. It's important to mention that as a conservation organization, our goal is to preserve the site. One of the major reasons why we were attracted to 13 Thomas Landers Road is because of the setting. It's a beautiful setting. It's a rural setting. There's an open field area and a very well-constructed building. So, our goal is to preserve the rural setting at 13 Thomas Landers Road, utilizing existing site conditions to the greatest extent possible that's reflected on our site plan and was a major part of the conversation with the Planning Board, utilizing the existing conditions. The purpose of the project, the headquarters, is to provide a handicap-accessible space for the administration and management of the 300 Committee, which is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. The headquarters will include handicap-accessible work and meeting space for our staff, Board of Directors, committees, conservation partners for monthly meetings. And I've already mentioned this, the headquarters is centrally located. It will serve as a stewardship HUD and includes adequate space for equipment storage for our stewardship needs for the over 2,000 acres of land that we're stewarding and counting. I'm going to close my comments and ask for Kevin Clawer to return. Thank you.
Thanks. She's a tough act to follow. So, as has been discussed, what we're here tonight to go over is 13 Thomas Landers Road. We're seeking approval to use this premises as offices for the philanthropic institution. It's a conversion of an existing single-family residence and outbuildings. This project requires multiple levels of approval. Site plan review decision from Planning Board, also a special permit from the Planning Board for parking in the front yard, both of which have been approved and are part of the file now, and in addition to a special permit from the Zoning Board for the use of a property in the agricultural district for philanthropic institution, and also for the existing accessory building, which is located in the front yard. As has been discussed, this is a beautiful property. It's nearby to the Coonamessett River and a number of other properties owned by the 300 Committee. The main structure is in very good shape. It's well-built and is going to be very ideal for what they're using it for. The outbuildings need some attention, but they're functional for storage purposes. The lot is just shy of three acres. It's 2.96 acres. Existing and proposed lot coverage by structure is only 3.55 percent, which is well below the 20 percent allowed by right. And the lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking increases marginally from 3.85 to 5.8, again, well below the 40 percent that's allowed. We are requesting a special permit under 246-1 for a philanthropic institution in an AGA zoning district that was formerly Section 24038F of the old iteration of the bylaw, in addition to a special permit under 240114A1I for the existing barn to remain in the front. 240114A1I for the existing barn to remain in the front yard. As you can see, the majority of this site is, in fact, front yard, and the barn is there, has been existing. We just thought would make it formal with the special permit request. The proposal is relatively straightforward. There's no changes to the exterior of the structures. There's only minimal changes to the interior. They're going to use the space for administrative offices and a small meeting space. The minor exterior changes are largely to accommodate the handicap parking and access. There's no changes proposed to the existing landscaping. It serves the location and the intent appropriately. It's a beautiful piece of property, and they intend to maintain the current field and landscaping that's there to maintain the rural character of the neighborhood and that particular property. The intent of this is for administration and management of the 300 Committee as a nonprofit 501(c)(3). It's an office space for small staff. It's going to be viewed as a stewardship hub for storage of materials in accordance with the agricultural use of the property. There will be small meetings periodically, such as with landowners or donors, board and committee, board and committee meetings monthly at most. But this is not intended to be a money generator for the 300 Committee. They're not going to be holding weddings here. They're not renting out the space. They're not holding large-scale events. Their annual meetings will continue to be held elsewhere as well as their speaker series. So any of the larger meetings the 300 Committee does have will not be held at this property. There's no specific criteria that are set forth for this special permit, so we have to look at the standards of 24012.1e under which the threshold question is, does the proposal have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects? If it don't. The lot is more than adequate in size. The site is more than suitable. In fact, it's ideal for the proposed use. There's minimal impact on traffic flow and safety. There's no change to neighborhood visual character. There's no change in utilities, proposed services, and it's been approved by the planning board by a site plan decision, site plan review decision. At the risk of oversimplifying, I believe that this meets all the requirements set forth, 246-1, 240114A1, and 24012.1e. I'd ask that the board grant the special permit, and I would be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Questions?
No, I mean, it's, it's interesting, 30-plus years ago, that the foundation was started to get 300 acres, and to think that they're almost at 3,000 is, is a great accomplishment. I think it's a, a great addition, quite honestly, to the 300 Committee, so no issues, no, no questions. I think it's a good project.
Agreed. I, I drove by and I saw the sign go up and I said, "Oh, no." And then when I learned, it was, yes, wonderful, wonderful project.
I don't know. It's a great place. Built it all themselves. I'm glad it's going to stay.
Frank?
I'm satisfied with your presentation, Mr. Clower. I have no further questions.
Jerry?
No further comment.
I have no questions.
Mark, to your, to your point, I thought that article in The Enterprise, when Scott detailed how his father built the property, was really fascinating and really touching. It was, it was really cool. You don't see stuff like that anymore. And, and the fact that this property is going to be maintained and preserved is, I think, really special.
Public comment? Think you have a word, can I, Kevin?
You know what? I'm going to go home. I'm just, I'm going to get up. Nothing good is going to come from you sticking around.
Is the board appointing a discussion of this project?
None.
None for me. Is there a motion to close?
We'll move.
Give that to Suzanne. Second, Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Findings? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
A motion to approve. That I'll give to you, Suzanne. Second to Suzanne. Findings?
Findings, okay. It's an AGA zone. It's Great Pond Overlay District. There was one previous zoning board decision in 1986. It's 2.96 acres. As Kevin said, it's 3.55 now in, in structure and 3.86 with the driveway. It's 3.5, coming up, proposed 3.55 and will be 5.82, probably just paving. It's a 246-1B, 240114A1, one, one I, 24014A112. It does have an existing non-conforming shed, and that's all I think I have.
We could just say that the special permit will cure the non-conformity as to the barney in the front. Not more detrimental. It does not outweigh adverse impacts. Anything over here?
Should we refer to the two votes of the planning board, the site plan review?
Yes. And the findings. Yes, please. You just incorporate the decision into that there was a planning board decision, that the project's required and been granted its numerous approvals from various regulatory bodies. Conditions?
Per, per plan.
Per plan. Yeah, it's going to be brought, there's a ramp going in.
Don't mess it up.
ADA and state regulations. Yeah, don't mess this up.
Listen, if you see me holding a hammer, something has gone wrong.
Grant of approval for philanthropic purposes. Anything else, Maureen? Frank, Jerry, Mark. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you all.
They already bought it, so if you said no, we were going to problem.
We'll let you know when that's signed and filed with the clerk. Next up, we have application 36-23 Doyle, 33 Sandpiper Circle, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to convert the existing garage into habitable space and construct a new garage exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
All right, let's see. We have Mary Hayes Doyle and Joseph Doyle, 35 Damon Road, Medford, Mass. Apply to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections 240, 11.3A4 of the Code of Falmouth to convert the existing garage into habitable space and construct a new garage exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 33 Sandpiper Circle in East Falmouth, Mass. And let's see, planning, no comment. Assessors, no comment. Fire Department, no comment. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Sandpiper Circle is a private right-of-way in this area. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities where required permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff under public property or butters or public rights of way. Four, a drywell is proposed for the new roof areas as we typically recommend, and drop inlets connected to the drywells are proposed for the driveway. Five, a limit of work is shown on the plans. It isn't clear what will be used in the field to demarcate this limit of work. The contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included. Construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation into abutting properties or right-of-way. That's engineering. Health. This project doesn't result in an increase of bedroom, bedroom count. However, the ZBA and the applicant need to know that this cesspool is very old, no newer than 1978, and will not last indefinitely. This addition may make it more difficult to place a septic system in the future as it is consuming real estate on the lot that may be needed for the new system. We suggest the applicant provide a reserve area for the septic system. Concom has no comments. And that's what we have for comments. We have two letters in support. And that's what I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. Jonathan Poloney, Stenian Associates out of Brewster. I'm here on behalf of the applicant's Mary and Joseph Doyle who are here in the audience. We are here, as you said, under, I think, under the new bylaw. I'm learning this is 11.3A to exceed lot coverage over 20%. The project shown here on the site plan is to relocate the garage adjacent to where it is located now and use that space for expanding the living room and also to expand the kitchen area. As part of that project, which can show you the, this will be the, this is the project as proposed. The garage will be re-sited over here. This is the expanded living room, and the kitchen is going to be bumped out here slightly. It's keeping the same number of bedrooms, and the lot coverage is going to increase from 17.87% up to 21.56%. There's also, located at the back here, a proposed rinse station on the back. Will not be visible from the street. So part of this project meeting the setback requirements was getting the front yard designated on this side, since it abuts the street going around on both sides. There is a letter from the building commissioner approving this as the front yard, so it meets the setback requirements for the front yard there, and then it meets the side yard and rear yard setbacks, so there's no complications there. The ridge height will not be increased. It currently is about 15 feet. It's not shown on this plan, but it's about 15 feet, and when the... When the garage is reconstructed, it will match the existing ridge height straight across. So there will be no impacts from that on any abutting properties. We believe that it meets the requirements under the bylaw, given these conditions. On the plans that we have submitted here with the site plans, the engineering has added a limit of work to address that comment from the engineering department. On the plans that you have, there's also reserve area shown in the front corner area, which addresses the comment from the health department. So I think we've met all the conditions under the bylaw, and we're asking that you approve this special permit.
Board questions. Start with you, Jerry.
No questions. I don't see the reserve area, but that's okay.
It is on revised plans that have been submitted.
I'm looking at it right now, and I don't see it.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I can't see mine either.
That may...
What's the date on the plan?
And Tom Bunker just left.
He might be still out there.
Someone in the audience is going to see if they can flag him down.
I'm not voting them, but I can, if you don't mind.
Frank, do you have any questions?
I have the same question as Jerry. I wanted to know where the reserve area was. I think they probably have a plan to do it, but I would like to see it designated on the plan.
I have nothing.
My only question yet was, you know, about the reserve area.
Yeah, that's the only question we have.
No plan just to update this Title V with the, the amount, the scope of work that's being done? I mean, not going to require it, but I am going to inquire.
At the time, there is not a plan to update to Title V. I think there may be other considerations at play. But for this, I have the plans, and I can get them to you tomorrow. I can probably even forward them to you tonight. I just don't have my computer with me.
Looks like Mr. Bunker may be coming back in, but I'll keep going down questions.
Just so you have it, the ridge height, 16 feet 3 inches. Not, it's not going to change any shadowing or anything, but according to the plan.
Before he leaves, we can take testimony. Mr. Bunker, is there sufficient room in the lot to put a reserve area in for a septic, a future septic?
Yes, there is. We, we did revise the plan. We show it, but it didn't get...
Can you just show us?
We, we have it.
Can you show us approximately where it's going to be?
We have it. It is in, in this area, basically in the front yard between the driveway and this curve of the road right in here. We, we do have it there, and we can get the plans over. Thank you.
Thank you for running back in.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Samus, for getting him. Board satisfied as to the issue of the reserve area?
Yep. Wish the cesspool wasn't staying, but as you say, we have no saying any of that, so.
Any other follow-up questions? Public comment? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. Second to Mr. Fineran. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion?
It's a good project. I know, I think it's, they're doing a very nice job. It's understandable what they're trying to achieve, the Doyle's trying to achieve, so positive. Thank you.
It will be a one-of-a-kind in the neighborhood where houses all look the same.
Frank?
No, I went out and I took a look at the property. I, they got some kind of strange constraints there because they have the, they're on the, around a sharp curve of the street.
Yeah.
So they did a pretty good job to accommodate that. I'm, I'm okay.
Jerry?
Okay.
I'm fine. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Suzanne. Second, give that to Mark. Findings?
Findings? Okay. It's in an RB zone. It's in the Great Pond Overlay. Lot size is 10,066. It's on a private road. This is a 240113A (4). The lot coverage was 17.87 over 21.54 with the full. Expanding now to 21.56 with the full will be 32.60.
Three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms. The ridge height was 16.3. Two letters in support. I'm correct?
Yeah.
Yep. And I think that's all I have.
No opposition at the hearing. Did have a comment from Board of Health concerning the cesspool. They're requesting that a reserve area be delineated in plans. Date of, date of hearing, plans were not submitted. However, the engineer, Mr. Bunker, testified that revised plans with the reserve area will be submitted and delineated to the board, the location of the reserve area. Ridge height not to increase. Anything else? Conditions?
No other structures?
Per plan. Per, per, per plan, revised plans with the reserve area must be submitted previous to a building permit being issued.
Right.
Standard hours of work. Oh, one other finding, Maureen, I'm sorry. Lots located on the corner of Sandpiper Circle, there's testimony that the, which side it's going to be front-facing has been adjusted to be in compliance.
It's made, east side.
Correct. So now it will be conforming as the side yard setback. Other conditions?
To remain three bedrooms?
Remaining three bedrooms.
Yeah, no bedrooms in the basement.
Yes, yep.
Stormwater, soil erosion.
Engineering comments?
Engineering comments, yeah.
Be incorporated. Did we miss anything, Maureen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last up this evening, we have application 37-23P's, 14 Alderbury Circle, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove the existing landing steps and construct a covered porch.
We have Elizabeth A. Pease, 14 Alderbury Circle, in East Falmouth, Mass. Applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit pursuant to Sections 240102A of the Code of Falmouth to remove any, to remove the existing landing steps and construct a covered porch on subject property known as 14 Alderbury Circle in East Falmouth. The comments, we have, planning has none. Fire Department has none. Engineering. Number one, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Alderbury Circle is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights of way. Four, we recommend the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures, or stormwater harvesting measures such as rain barrels for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, with the proposed work area location and lot grades, it appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor will be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls if conditions change. We recommend the following condition be included. Construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation into abutting properties or town right-of-way. Six, this plan, the plan shows a privacy fence and timber, timber wall located within the abutting town parcel. Based on aerial photography, there may also be a garden on the town parcel. Permanent installation of objects not on the town and located on town property typically require permission from the select board. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals if this matter should be addressed prior We defer to the zoning board of appeals if this matter should be addressed prior to any approval or as a condition in any approval. That's from engineering. Health had no problem. Concom has no problem. Eight letters of support, none in opposition. And that's what we have.
Good evening. Good to the applicant.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brian Hawke and I'm here representing Elizabeth and Gary on this project. So, we've applied to the board for special permit pursuant to section 240-10.2A, formerly 240-3C, to remove the existing dilapidated front landing and steps and construct a covered porch at the property located at 14 Alderberry Circle. The lot contains approximately 37,488 square feet, a single-family ranch, side back deck, and then these two small sheds on the property. Existing lot coverage by structure is 6.5. The proposed will be 6.8. Existing impervious is 8.3. Proposed will be 8.6, again, which is well below the 20 and 40 percent that are allowed. The current front setback, and we have a, is 18.9 to the road layout. And the proposed porch will maintain the same exact 18.9 foot setback. There's a large area of unpaved layout, which makes the house appear to be set farther back, but there's a lot of, like, 12 feet that was not paved. The new porch is gonna provide a safe, covered front entry that will beautify and add character to the house and the neighborhood as a whole. On the file, you mentioned that we had eight of the immediate neighbors supporting the project, overwhelmingly supporting the project. And therefore, under section 240-102A, we're respectfully requesting a special permit to construct approximately 117.26 square foot covered porch with two steps to grade.
Board questions? Scott?
Thank you. Obviously, the fence and the timber wall will have to get addressed either in potentially our conditions or select board. I guess, can you give me a little bit more background on this radius? I just, when you drive up to this site and you made the comment, this seems like, almost like a no-brainer, but what, what becomes problematic is you're less than 25 feet. And that's what the bylaws require. Was there any history you have on why this radius is so wide on this cul-de-sac? I just, I struggle on why that frontage gets eaten up so much on that property.
I agree. I agree. This is a pre-existing non-conforming. And I thought the same thing when I first went there and met with them. I said, "There's no way. You've gotta have plenty of room." They would not need that big a cul-de-sac for this. I was amazed and saw a lot of... Mr. Basoli went out there and did the survey and showed that that's where the actual layout is. I have no history as to why they did such a large cul-de-sac and chose not to pave so much of it. I do not know. Kind of boggles my mind a bit. It's not that typical for a small street like that to be done that way.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know, that's the difficulty on this is it's still town property.
And a private street, too.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. No further questions.
Suzanne?
I have no questions.
Mark?
Technically, we're extending a non-conformity by lengthening the structure in the front. Tell us about that, Noreen.
So, it's interesting that the bylaw seems to exclude steps towards setbacks. So, when a foundation is poured, there's no landing or steps. It's just a setback to a foundation. So, presumably dwellings are 25 feet from the street. And then, obviously, to access your front door, you have a landing and you have steps. So, the bylaw seems to exclude steps. The bylaw also excludes four-foot-deep landing because you need that by code. So, essentially, what is there technically conforms. But what they're telling you is that with the landing and the stairs, that by removing that and replacing it with a deck, that they're not getting any closer to the street. But they're also extending the roof closer to the street.
The roof, nothing will extend any closer. It'll all stay that exact 18.9. The roof?
Right, but the roof right now is at...
Oh, you're saying the main house roof?
Twenty-five feet.
Yeah, the main house roof. Yeah, I apologize.
So, the facade of the house is 25 feet from the street.
Right.
So, you would, by bringing the roof out, would be now 18.9, which is closer to the street.
The existing roof line would, but the structure itself becomes no closer. And again, the four feet that's unincluded, but the existing, as we see in the blow-up, is five foot four. And I know the bylaw says it doesn't include four-foot levers.
That's width, right. And four, four feet deep.
But technically, extending it is extending a non-conformity as well. It can go in both directions.
I understand, I understand.
That's kind of what I was addressing. I mean, it's, you know, again, you go look at the place, it seems like a no-brainer the way it's laid out.
It's...
The one, we had one a couple of weeks ago that, you know, had about another bonus, 15 feet in their front yard, which was, you know, certainly more than the usual 10, huh? I don't know.
It is incredibly deceiving when you go there and see that. I do agree.
I have nothing else.
Frank? I went out and I visited the property the other day. I think the proposed change to the front facade makes sense. It'll look a lot nicer. I'm not particularly concerned about the encroachment in the backyard because it doesn't really affect any zoning issues. But it's, it's our policy to require or direct the owner to try and resolve those with the town. I think we should continue to do that. I don't think they're gonna have any problem, but I think we should ask them to do it.
Are you okay with conditioning it, or do you want them to obtain a license before?
No, I think we can condition it.
Nothing further to add?
If I may add?
Certainly.
On that topic of the fence and the garden, that was there prior to her owning the property. It's not something that she had put in or installed. And they have had conversations with engineering and agreed to do whatever steps necessary to remove or relocate that as the town sees it.
Well, the town can allow you to keep it there.
Yeah.
No, it was there when they bought the house. They didn't put it in.
No, they might allow you to keep it. I mean, it's...
Oh, no, no. They're gonna remove it, whatever the town will...
Encroachments like this are very common. It comes to us all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just the policy is to try to get people either to get licensed by the town or defer to the selectmen as to what they want done.
And they're in full agreement to, to remove it, absolutely.
All right, all right. Well, that's testimony. Are they gonna remove the encroachment?
The fence, correct, yeah.
Well, I don't wanna pigeonhole you. Remove, obtain a license or remove. Whatever. If the selectman won't let them keep it, that's fine. But I think we can condition either removal or...
License fences, all the time.
One or the other. These things happen.
It's so, it's so old, honestly, you're not gonna...
He might wanna replace it.
Any follow-up questions?
I feel we can use the extraordinary layout of this lot.
We'll have some discussion about this. I think we're all in agreement, but...
Yeah.
Public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mark. Is there a second? Second by Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing is closed. No more testimony will be taken. Board discussion. I'll start off. Whether we wanna call this a special permit or even a variance, if this was a variance application, I'd be in support of it only because of the very unique dimensions, the radius and so on. I think that what is proposed is a significant improvement to the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the property. So, I would be in support. It's a special permit application. I think that we can get it in if someone appeals, well, then so be it, but I'm...
Well, you have a very odd shape. And one of the criteria for a variance is shape, topography.
Shape and topography. But we don't have a, we don't have a variance application. It's a special permit. Regardless of what you wanna call it, I would be in support, only means I think this is very unique circumstances and I think it's equitable as a port of relief that we grant the requests. So, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I wish the radius wasn't so deep into the property as I think maybe Mark might have said, that this would be a no-brainer. When you drive up to the property and, yeah, everything looked great until we kind of surveyed the plans and now we're gonna get within the 25 feet, but...
I think we can put in one of the findings, though, 'cause the, the actual radius versus the paved areas. So, it does, I mean, I think if we were going to the paved area, it would be in compliance, but for the...
Oh, absolutely.
By far.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, you know, we always worry about precedent, so that's, I think, to your point, if we can make those comments, that, that could help to stabilize this. I'm in agreement with that.
This might have actually been better applied as a variance.
All right. We record something in the registry of these. No one will question it, so...
Jerry, comments?
I think you guys covered it all. Tip-offs coming.
How would the board like to proceed?
Let's check with Noreen. Noreen, you good with this?
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you guys, you know, are able to grant special permit. You just, you know, it's like I said, just wanna keep in mind exactly what the request is, right? So...
They just have to go get a license.
Yeah, working condition.
Yeah, which is very common.
I like the dual. They can either remove or, yeah.
Do we have any motion?
Motion to approve with conditions.
I'll give that to Suzanne. I'll give you the second. Findings?
Findings? Let's see. For the third time tonight, it's an overlay Great Pond. Or is it fourth time tonight? Zoning district is AGA. It's a 240-102A. The height is 16.2. The porch itself is 15.8. The lot size is 37, 488. It's on a private road. It's going from 6.5 to 8.39. And the new project will be 6.8 to 8.6. Eight letters in support. Twenty-two-foot-long porch. I think that's about all I have.
There is an encroachment onto town property...
Correct.
As referenced by the engineering comments. Particular lot is a very unusual shape. The radius, the front, the front side is also unusual. The pavement versus the delineated radius of the circle are significantly different, giving you parents that the house is set further back than was on the plans. Record that there was some board discussion that the board took into consideration the unique shape of this particular lot. I'm agreeing with the decision. I believe that relief is equitable. You said eight letters to support. No opposition at the hearing. You got the lot size in there?
Yeah. Thirty-seven, 488.
Yep. Any other findings? From the rights lawyer? Conditions?
The, um, remove? I, I pointed, I pointed.
Per plans, bedroom counts remaining the same. Standard hours of work, plenty of room to get stuff or keep stuff on, on the property during construction. Applicant will either remove or get licenses from the town for all encroachments on the town land.
Further structures?
Well, they got plenty of room if they wanna put...
True. They do. You're right. Probably it's eight.
Yeah, they, they can put other stuff on at this point. We don't need to condition.
Now, was that before issuance?
How do we generally condition with the license? Just either they're before the issuance of a building permit, Noreen, or...
So, as long as they have filed prior to, I think, final sign-off, you know, we just wanna make sure that they actually file with the select board or remove, so it's there.
That's fine, then. That's scribble the board.
Yeah. Okay.
And then, engineering did ask for, they usually ask for a drywell or such for new roof area.
Yep, that's fine.
So, that should be added.
They say drywell or rain barrels.
Rain garden.
Rain garden.
Right, so...
First time I heard rain barrels in a long time from them.
You did say rain barrels, yeah.
So, whatever they...
Incorporate the, yeah, the engineering comments. Anything else?
No.
All those in favor, would please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
That concludes our new comments for the evening. Next up, under our open meeting agenda, we have minutes. We will be tabling the minutes of May 4th and May 11th. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of April 27, 2023?
Yes.
Motion to approve? Any, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any adjustments, corrections, or edits? No. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of April 27, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. Number two, board discussion. If anything that needs to be discussed this evening?
At some point, I guess maybe we could do a little more of a, have a larger discussion on, do we seek to have 40B like a legal specialist? We potentially have some, a fairly large proposal that might become before the board. And I, I guess I personally believe that having that type of additional guidance from someone is worthwhile. I'm not sure if the rest of the board feels that way, but I just wanted to put it on the table for people to opine.
With Attorney Wall's comment last week about the county having engineers at our disposal, I would kind of appreciate if we had a shopping list of what the county does have for us to use. We're all paying for it. I mean, if anybody can educate me further, I'm usually willing.
Noreen, could you reach out to the Cape Cod Commission and/or the county to see what services will be available to us that might assist us in large projects and decisions in?
I mean, this is within our discretion to ask for, not only we ask for engineering, but I guess we could ask for, I don't know if you call it special counsel, but...
All right, so just for your board's knowledge, under 40B with the current regulations, while you can request and require a peer engineer, traffic, whatever else it is that the applicant has to pay for...
Correct.
You cannot require them to pay for your legal representation.
Right.
It used to be the case that you could. You cannot any longer.
Okay. Refresh my memory. Do we have, or did we get a standalone budget for the ZB, for legal, for the ZBA, or is that a discretionary under the selectmen's budget?
So, yeah, our budget remains unchanged.
Okay.
That being said, I think we typically approach the select board if we require funds for whatever it is.
Would that interpretation go as far as to say that they hire an independent counsel to review things when they're not doing it for us? It's sort of like they hire a special ZBA counsel.
Who's they?
The applicant, a 40B counsel.
Normally... It's just if I'm wrong, Frank or Noreen, any legal questions go to town council and then if need be, they'll bring in special town council for us.
We have had special town council on a couple of 40Bs, the most recent being the litigation or the application for Liberty Green, which is at, on Main Street across from St. Patrick's Church. That was a rather complicated one and it was, I think, 80 or 90 units.
Yes.
And it was fairly, fairly large. Other 40Bs have just gone through without the necessity for special counsel, but it's always beneficial to collect some money from the applicant, to hire an engineer or special, other special advisors because these projects overwhelm the engineering department. They simply can't do their regular work and attend to our needs on a 40B at the same time.
So for the board's knowledge, too, for any 40Bs, that's our street practice, is that we require that they provide the tiers. And we have a couple of vetted firms that we use.
And we have, we have a bylaw which authorizes it. And there's a, a list of, what, three anyways, engineering firms that have indicated an interest in being appointed special, um, engineering, for special engineering services.
Would the special services include zoning services? Not legal zoning? I'm trying.
There are people out there that do 40B that will come into towns and help with projects. We had one, that, we had a 400-unit one before I came down.
I, I just throwing it out. I'm not sure if we're still on the thin ice.
Well, there's, you have the engineering issues which involve traffic, drainage, soil conditions, all that other stuff.
Site plan review.
Site plan review and so forth. And then you have financial because one of the complaints that, one of the grounds for appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee is the developer can say you impose conditions that render the project uneconomic. You don't want to fall in the trap of going up to the Housing Appeals Committee trying to defend a condition which is going to significantly increase the cost of the project.
So there, and might be a place where we could use county help. That'd be the floor.
A lot of that would come out of our PR engineer review, looking at the pro forma, the financial aspects of the conditions that we're asking for as to whether or not it, or at least have a rebuttable argument that it is not going to make it uneconomic for the developer.
And I know, Noreen, it's a moving target that we're at like 7.2 percent and Safe Harbor's at 10 percent. But what, what is the math? Is that another 50 units have to come onboard or 150 units? That would get us to Safe Harbor?
So, brand-new today, the affordable housing individual for the town now has a website up. And as part of the website is including subsidized housing inventory. So now everybody will have access to that information. So as the units are added and our percentage changes, it will be reflected there.
Okay, I think, piggybacking on that issue, I think it would be good if the board were in agreement that we need to perhaps advise our incoming new town administrator and/or the board of selectmen the importance of getting the subsidized housing stuff certified.
Yeah, good points.
Right, we have a housing production plan that needs to be updated.
Because in addition to 10%, if we hit certain benchmarks in the housing production plan, we get to Safe Harbor as well.
Yeah.
Which gives the town...
Under 10. More power to, to determine and...
Yeah, it gives us a little bit more discretion and leeway to regulate these projects.
They hit it at 80 at one point.
It, it needs to be done. So I think that it would be beneficial perhaps if we request the zoning administrator to remind the board of selectmen and/or the incoming town advantage of the importance of this issue and perhaps make it a priority.
No, they're working on it.
There's no eligibility letter yet. Have you heard that?
Okay.
No.
Just because you get to Safe Harbor does not mean they can't apply 40B. It just gives the board a little bit more leverage in dealing with it.
Correct. Which I don't personally think is a bad thing to have. But it also shows that the board and the town are also committed to the issue of affordable housing because of hitting those benchmarks.
Okay, thank you.
Other issues for discussion?
You want to bring up, or maybe it's too premature, our next meeting it may be?
Uh, so our next scheduled meeting is the 8th, June 8th, correct?
Correct.
I will not be at that meeting, but there are some logistical problems. There will be some construction at town hall that evening.
Right.
I guess they're ripping up the carpet as well as... Where did the asbestos come into this, Noreen? I'm sorry.
Under there.
It's underneath.
Apparently, it's under the carpet and the tile. So I guess maybe for the public's knowledge, while we have a board meeting scheduled for the 8th, the board's intention is to reschedule that. We don't have a firm date set yet, so we're not able to announce it. So we will have to meet, albeit briefly, on the 8th in order to continue the hearing to a date and time certain.
We only need a quorum of the board. We don't need the whole board. So three people have to be here to do that.
I think it's four, is that correct?
It's right.
No, four, four is not a quorum. Four is the supermajority to vote.
Okay.
Special reasons, a quorum is right.
So as long as three people come on the 8th.
And where would we meet?
I'll meet you there, Frank.
In the basement, which is accessed by the back of the town hall.
By your mask.
Because the first floor will be under construction.
Will be, we're not going to be under any prohibition for entering the building if there's asbestos.
Well, I'm told not. So, part of the rationale for not holding the hearing was to ensure that there's no health issues. But there will also be noise generated from the construction. So...
You're working on it, so...
I always meet in the parking lot right outside the door.
I was going to suggest, why not, why not notice the meeting for the parking lot? That takes the whole issue rather than, if there's suddenly an issue where we can't even get in the building.